All right, we will call the village board meeting of October twenty-six. Roll call, please.
President Jay Langfalt.
Here.
Trustee Sarah Fransl.
Here.
Trustee Laurie Xander. Trustee Michael Pomakowski.
Here.
Trustee Kevin Tousias.
Here.
Trustee Judy Kellbolder.
Here.
Trustee Bill Brok.
Here.
All right, that's Stanford, the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're at public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the village board. On any issue, please observe the time limit of three minutes. While the village board encourages input from residents, it may not discuss or act on any issue that is not duly noticed on the agenda. Let's start with the ones on the.
Okay, we do have a pre-registration here for from Doug Brunner in regards to Bear Park. Address is six zero zero four Loffenberg Boulevard.
All right.
Actually, I'll make comment on two topics. First, I'd like to make the board aware that Jim Mountain, Stan, and myself and Cross Plains Baseball are going through the Parks and Rec Committee to recommend a large baseball diamond at Bear Park, be named Forest Field in honor of Fran and Pat Morris, commitment to Cross Plains Youth Baseball Programs for over five decades, hopeful the process will be slammed down. Francis founded the program in Cross Plains in nineteen sixty-three and was active his entire life.
No problem. Second is I know the future of the Chamber of Commerce is being discussed tonight. I'm a past board president and president of a Chamber of Commerce and have remained active after selling my business. Appreciate the job Tara Morris and the board did with all the challenges in two thousand twenty. I think it's important to our businesses and community that we continue with an inclusive chamber, and I see three future paths possible. One is continue as is with a part-time exec director and less ambitious agenda, more online virtual connections than previously done, continue Memorial Day and golf voting as community events, and recruit a strong board, perhaps add a raffle ticket as a fundraiser along with Memorial Day activities. A second option would be move to a non-paid director model similar to Black Earth, possibly merge with Black Earth and more mazel to leverage leadership positions and market more member businesses, could be two or three gateway to the driftless communities working together. I think there's potential investigating this direction. And a third option could be to have the village help staff a part-time chamber tourism economic development coordinator. With current office staffing cyclical work, there could be creative ways to work with Parks and Rec and/or office staff to give some new duties and/or cross train a person to continue in their current role and add some chamber or economic development role. Could be a great option with village board support. Thank you.
You. I do not have any other pre-registration. All right, this moves to the consent agenda. Bottom four, if any trustee, any item may be removed on the consent agenda with careful consideration on your general business. Any item that would like to be moved? Bill, I'd like to pull up number three just so we can talk about it. Okay, three will be moved to number ten on general business. I make a motion to approve instead of doing it. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All of us saying. Okay, village report of village officers. Undermine, I just added, you saw the chief send you a letter talking about the traffic triangle, I just want to make sure everybody knows what that is and that's something the plan's gonna have to work on. We look up on the board, it's basically what you do is take thirty feet from the corner, go down each way, and then connect the line across, that's the thirty-foot triangle. So anything within that triangle that's over two and a half feet and under eight feet is not supposed to be there. I just point this out, if you drive around the village, you'll see there's quite a few violations, including where village has put signs and other items that could be in that traffic triangle. So that's what we're talking about, we're gonna have to deal with it somewhere or the other. But I just wanted to make sure because you got that email, everybody understands what that is. All right, we'll move to village vice president. Judy.
Just that Dylan, I've gotten together to talk about the movies in the chamber, and right now we have a lady, the bank president step up, she's gonna be trying to help with a lot of the social media and so forth, there's no events at the moment, you can't help us, but we do wanna keep it going. Bill has offered to attend to some meetings, but I think I won't be there again.
Correct. Yeah, I reached out to them, I've gone to the mountain, and I haven't been to the resort.
So really, at the moment, the village is not helping the chamber, but we may need to win that.
All right, thank you very much. Any other reports from trustee? Michael.
I would just like to say that the sustainability committee is having a public forum on their creation of sustainability plan. This will be November fourteenth, it's a Saturday, it's at ten a.m., and it is via Zoom. So when you asked last time where it was, it's not anywhere, it's over Zoom.
And Laurie.
Um, I would just like to say that our public safety committee did bring up body armor, tasers, and other lethal weapons that our officers can have, and we're still going to be discussing those issues.
Okay, thank you.
Bill. So, will every board pass the motion that there are three that I'm not agreeing with this board to speak, but there are three part-time employees that don't normally get the year bonus because they're part-time, or American, so they're part-time. The village or the library board had decided that they, that these employees are considered essential workers, and they, and they passed the motion to give them a five hundred dollar each year bonus for the work that they've done this last year within COVID and doing everything that they would normally do outside their normal scope. Money's gonna come from a library, library fund balance that they have, so it's not new money that's being asked for, money is there right now, but I just wanted to make everyone aware that there's also three part-time employees that are beginning this, this year, this year bonus. All right.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you very much. We'll move to village administrator's part.
So just going out of this list, just a quick update on trichotillitis. Recently, the CDC has come out dividing against the traditional trichotillitis, saying that that is a high-risk activity, and therefore that's contrary to what we had announced at the last board meeting, stating that we would have trichotillitis. We've sent both it on our website and on the village's Facebook site, stating as such. And we do have all resources put up on our website in regards to what the CDC, Department of Health, and Madison Health have put up. In regards to elections, we are in the middle of mail-in absentee voting and in-person absentee voting. Very busy. I think we've had probably a fifty percent turnout so far, so we need to respond to that. So that continues, I'm just gonna read some deadlines coming here this week for you and going into October third, next Tuesday. These are hard days to keep in mind for the public. So this Thursday, October twenty-ninth, will be the last day for the public to request a mail-in ballot from the court's office. October thirtieth, which is Friday, is the last day for in-person voting at the court's office, and it is also the last day for in-person voter registration. There is no voting over the weekend or on Monday. And then on November thirtieth, election day, that again will be here in the summer library on seven o'clock, so it will be on June. As it currently stands, mail-in ballots must be here by eight o'clock. We can receive them at village hall in person during office hours, and we do have a ballot box in front of village hall that will be checked until the last pick will be seven-thirty on election day. It's projected or estimated that it takes about three to five days for the vote to deliver. And so if you or any members of the public that are worried about their ballots not being turned in on time on election day, we would encourage that we drop them off. Once we receive them, we keep them logged up until election day where we process them. And again, just want to remind everyone that the whole place is here at the library meeting room, again, that goes from seven o'clock. The last update here in regards to village work mode, especially here at both board level and all that, all of the, the uptake in the gym item, all the gym item, and that's representative of how busy it's been in the village lately. If you remember back at the beginning of the year, we had ATVs and TV, and we quickly jumped into COVID nineteen and a response to COVID nineteen. We had four elections this year, like blood control and move forward on that, and new processes for both capital improvement process and the budgeting process, those are earlier in the year. And we have, again, most of the, seen a valley, some of the vision kicking up. You'll see some lineup around this evening. And so a lot of the regular items that we had scheduled, like both ordinances kind of put on the backboard, you'll see that now at the end of the year here. Well, the ordinances that you, that you have seen should have been done as part of the ratings in the year, we're catching up on that as you see, I'm sure, the only ones that are coming up are in response to the case that was in our place while they're in place for a while. So if you do have any questions in regards to the night, or any material related, get ahold of me and I can put that information through.
Bill, can you just ask those key questions about the election?
Sure.
So where, where is the state now as far as when all ballots have to be drawn? The, I'm sure.
Election day, yeah, November third, eighth, yeah.
So now I'll be.
They have, they have to be, they have to be here.
Here, okay. And so, so the second question is if they come into the ballot box.
Yep.
Right after seven thirty p.m., they're not being counted?
Yeah, so I do my last check, yeah, with the ballot box on some third.
Okay.
And at that time, I am going to put up, it's a apparatus block, anyone from transferring ballots into that box.
Okay.
So that they will have to be counted, too.
Yeah. Okay, great, just wanted, thank you.
Any other questions?
Other report, we have Bobby for third floor financial report.
We have Bobby on, online here. Bobby, go ahead and unmute yourself, and Bobby can jump to your.
Hello, everyone. In your packet, I put together a memo kind of outlining what happened in the last quarter. I'll just kind of go over that. General fund, we still haven't had to dip into last year's fund balance, so we're doing good. A lot of unbudgeted costs, COVID-related, we will be getting reimbursed through the routes to recovery. Those funds will be spread out over whatever fund purchased them, so if like library had to purchase PPE and stuff, like the funds we get from the grant money, we'll go back to library for that. Looking at capital projects, we have used some of that because we haven't done any borrowing for this year. Projects are coming in, I know Jerry's repaving stuff, we got all the bills for that in fourth quarter, so that's not included in this yet. We did pay for the new playground equipment in third quarter. It got recorded to capital projects, but then the transfer from the Parks and Rec fund balance came into capital to pay for that, as was talked about. Library's still doing good. Parks and Rec, I know Mike and I need to get together later this month or next month to kind of do a budget amendment maybe and see how their season fared COVID-related, I think better than originally we thought, so that's good. Debt service, we are still on target for budget for that, so anything left over at the end of this year will get pulled over into general fund. Tit is still doing good. And then water and sewer, as expected, as well, there's nothing out of the ordinary going on with either of those funds. Does anybody have any questions or want more information on anything?
I've got a question on sewer utility fund, I think we need to rename, or at least make the name, you have two equipment replacement funds, and I think one's restricted, one's unrestricted. I think the unrestricted one, we should just call it sewer support account, I think it's gonna be confusing, and the one that is restricted, that state law requiring, I'll calculate that, but I think we need to make sure there's a clear difference in those two accounts.
So on the top.
Judy, go ahead.
Was it the one million, that, is that restricted? Or it's an assigned.
No.
That's not.
But there are five hundred thousand of that belongs to that payout to the farm, just the.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The five hundred, about the one million?
Yeah.
Okay.
Laurie?
Oh, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. Anything else? All right, it doesn't look like there's any other questions, Bobby, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll go to general business, tonight's public hearing for the twenty twenty-one full budget. Do I have an amendment to open up a public amendment? Do I have a motion to open up the public hearing? Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, all of us saying, public hearing is open. Do we have anybody that would like to speak? Is there any, I see no one in the room, they're all on the computer.
I don't see anyone with their hands up here. If you would like to speak in regards to the budget hearing this evening, there should be three dots at the bottom of the screen there for under the participation. Feel free to raise your hand or unmute yourself if you'd like to speak.
All right, going once, going twice. All right, do I have a motion to close the public hearing for the twenty twenty-one full budget?
Seven.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all of us saying, so move, public hearing's closed. All right, we're gonna have a presentation from Sparty's anti-racist, Cross Plains, is Andy Hartman on?
Yes, I have Andy Hartman on here, and I believe that was together with all the committee. Okay, give me a minute here, and I'll pull up their presentation.
All right.
Good evening, everybody, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Fantastic, well, we really appreciate giving us a couple of minutes tonight to introduce ourselves and just kind of extend a hand of support and gratitude to the village board. And so, my name is Andy Hartman, I live on Elmwood Circle, and this is my third year in Cross Plains, and I love living here. And I just wanted to thank the board for allowing us the time, and I'm here with my compatriot Melissa Gavin, who is also my neighbor across the creek, and so we're just gonna take a few minutes to talk about who we are, and you can go on to the next slide there, Bill. So, kind of why we're here today is generally just to introduce ourselves to the community and to the village board.
Aye.
Yep, it's all good, I know, it's, it's par for the course in, in COVID land. And so we're here to introduce ourselves and to answer any questions the board might have about who we are and kind of what we're up to in the community. We'd also like to request advisory committee status to just sort of review some of the protocol systems and policies that we have in our community and how we can do that in a way that's a little bit more equitable to achieve some parity in our, in our community. And then we've got some really big ideas that we're excited about sharing with the village board that we'll do at the end of, of the meeting today, and just generally want to let the board know that we're here as a supportive new organization to just help make the village a more inclusive, better place, and we've got some super crazy, interesting, fun ideas to do both equity and anti-racism while also having a good time in Cross Plains. So we're excited to share that with you. Next slide there, please, Bill.
Great, thanks, hi, everyone, Melissa Gavin, I am Andy's neighbor and I live on Brewery Road, and I want to begin with an acknowledgement of the land that we are standing on today. So whether we are in person at the library or zooming in from our living rooms, we are on stolen land from native people, and here in Cross Plains, we're on the stolen land of the Miami, the Oshetti Shakowin, the Kickapoo, the Peoria, the Sock, the Musquaky, and the Ho-Chunk. And we share a land acknowledgement because as a community, we are coming together to talk about how to confront and dismantle the oppressive system of racism, and that means that we can't treat the past as if it's gone, it's not even the past, it lives right here with and among us. So according to the most recent census data, Cross Plains population is about ninety-seven percent single rate, white, but the truth is, is that's only a snapshot in time, long before it was ninety-seven percent white, it was Ho-Chunk and other native peoples. And shifting national demographics point to the future for our community as well, a more diverse place to live. We're gonna have new census numbers pretty soon, but the trend, both locally and nationally, has been clear, we are seeing greater racial diversity in every city and every state, and it's something that we're here to embrace. Unless you think that aspiring anti-racist of Cross Plains is something radically new, Cross Plains has its roots in abolition and an abolition movement to the Underground Railroad, so a home right here on Church Street was built with a double basement with a secret passage that was a refuge for people who were fleeing enslavement. So we can't treat the past as if it's gone, it's not in the past, it lives right here, it lives with and among us, it's the very land beneath our feet, and it's the houses on our streets. Our history and our stories about ourselves are part of what makes us who we are and what we are. In the aspiring anti-racist of Cross Plains, we're coming together to examine how racism plays into those stories, stories of us as individuals and stories of us as a community, and how we collectively can come together to tell a new story, a story that's about liberation, about freedom, and about being for each other. So as Cross Plains follows national trends and becomes more diverse, our community will become more vibrant and thriving and a more interesting place to live. And aspiring anti-racist, we're examining the structures and the processes and the mindsets that may create barriers to living in a more thriving community. So we're here tonight to invite you to participate and learn among and along with us, and we want to talk a little bit about some of those ideas. Andy, I'm gonna hand it back to you.
Awesome, thank you, as always, for the wisdom that you share with us. I put into the chat for anybody who's interested, a link to this video along with the land acknowledgement website from the Department of Cultural Affairs, which is something that we have in the U.S. federal government, and so if you're interested in learning more about land acknowledgement and how to incorporate that into village business, the link in the chat will get you to that place. You can go on to the next slide, Bill. So we thought, you know, just to take a few minutes and just kind of talk about what it is that we do on a typical basis in the village. In, in the short time after the events that took place in Minneapolis and the death of George Floyd, a lot of village members had expressed, you know, just sort of a desire to get together and to debrief and to talk about those events with people that live next to you. I think there was an overwhelming sense for a lot of us that we just don't know our neighbors as enough as we typically have maybe in, you know, decades past, and just wanted to really process those events with people who live right here in this community. And so that was sort of the genesis of, of the organization, and getting people together to just generally do individual work to sort of reflect and grow as a community, and to have these difficult conversations with each other in a very safe environment where we can learn and grow and aspire to be anti-racist. And so we typically start every meeting with, with some meeting norms that we just sort of set for ourselves and the group that are conducive, are very conducive to facilitating this type of process where judgment is not the emphasis, but growth and understanding and sitting with discomfort and making sure that you're owning your own sort of being and who you are and what you contribute to the systems of oppression that exist in our lives. And so this is just a snapshot of the norms that we like to sort of read every single meeting, just so that we can ground ourselves in the right mindset before we start to engage in, in the difficult work that it is to talk about issues of race, which can be hard for many people. You can go to the next slide, Bill. Additionally, we sort of came together and, and decided that, you know, what, what are we doing, what is the overarching objectives of this group? And so our mission statement is pretty straightforward, and we organized it, you know, in the first several meetings that we got together with the community members. Initially, this was sort of an all-call on the Moms and Dads of Cross Plains Facebook page, where all of us concerned parents sort of threw this out there, and we had such a degree of interest that this group formed, where I think our email list is something around sixty or seventy people, we typically have anywhere between fifteen to twenty members showing up for a given meeting. During the summer, we were meeting, meeting every Thursday evening via Zoom, as the school year started going again, a lot of us are either educators or parents, and so things get kind of busy, so now we're on a bi-weekly basis. But this is sort of the overarching objective that we, we adhere to and that we aspire towards. So we are a community group that was formed to provide a supportive space to encourage So we are a community group that was formed to provide a supportive space to encourage villagers to seek self-exploration, knowledge, understanding, and reflection on race and racial identity. We actively engage in the journey of coming to terms with and understanding race, its impact, and racial identity as an individual, community, and country so that we can participate in meaningful change to achieve racial parity in society. So we're trying to focus and do that work here in the village and the surrounding area so that we can just make it a more inclusive place because as Melissa noted in her comments during the land acknowledgement, the demographics are consistently shifting and changing. And as somebody who has taught at the high school for the past ten years, I can tell you that is absolutely the case. And we are soon gonna hit three thousand students at Middleton High School and it will be more diverse than it has ever been. And so, it, at this point, we, we sort of need to realize and recognize as a community that this is a strength that we have, right? Our ability to engage in this type of work is gonna be something that's gonna make us a stronger community in the future. And the phrase anti-racist oftentimes is sort of a loaded phrase or a phrase that injects emotion into a conversation. And we, we, we get the phrase from Angela Davis in a quote that she made back in the nineteen sixties, in a racist society, it's not enough to be non-racist, we must be anti-racist. And so our objective is to try and take as small steps as possible to as large steps as possible as a community and individual to just do the good work that is being an anti-racist. You can go to the next slide, thank you, Bill. So there are ways to find us if you're interested in engaging with us. Everyone in the community, including board members, are welcome to join us. Bill, we'd love to have you, buddy, any given time and day, you know, you're always welcome. And so we do have, and I will put this into the chat as well, a website where we just provide resources to different podcasts, readings, books, videos, documentaries, events that are taking place in around the Dane County area. And then we have a Facebook group that's specific to the aspiring anti-racist across plains where people can, you know, make comments, see what we're discussing at meetings, our agendas will be posted and so on and so forth. So that's where you can find us on social media. And our website is linked from our Facebook page itself if you're very curious what we're up to and, and where we are. And then I think, yep, next one, thank you, Bill. So back to the nature at hand, we, we, we just want to let the, the board know and just our community that we're here and that we'd like to engage and participate in any way that we can in a positive force. And we've got some ideas that we kind of wanted to run by the board or at least throw out to the community that we're very interested in and excited about. So one of which is the advisory committee status to just sort of look back at policies that are currently in existence in the village and/or policies that potentially could be proposed as changes into the future and just to advise the board on how those decisions might impact communities of color and generally from this anti-racist lens of making sure those decisions aren't going to negatively impact our ability to be a welcoming place into the twenty-first century and beyond. And so that's something that we really hope the village would consider is advisory committee status for an organization like ourselves. And then I think Melissa is the genesis of some of these great ideas as well and I'd like her to maybe just touch really quickly on some of our ideas to add a little artistic flair to the community.
We, um, we want to make our way in joy and beauty and, and believe that one project that could potentially bring the community together and really, really tap into the richness of Cross Plains is art, is public art. And whether that's a mural or street art, something that depicts the, the arc of Cross Plains history in terms of, you know, Ho-Chunk people, this is, this is Ho-Chunk land and being part of the Underground Railroad and, and then the future too. And, and we think that there are, you know, there's visual art that we can bring into the community, potentially student art quotes. And we just want to engage with village board members both in terms of helping us understand the process for, for bringing about public art. We don't know how to make that happen, we don't know how to, how to bring that to fruition. And also bringing people joyfully along with us and, and coming together for a project that would make our community, you know, a better place to live and, and to, you know, and to enjoy. So that's, the question for us is, how would we move forward if we wanted to, to engage in some sort of public arts process or a mural, how do we engage? And, and are there folks associated with the village, whether it's staff or board, that, that might help us move that process ahead? Andy, what would you add to that? What else, what, what am I missing on the, that piece?
No, I, I think as always, you're concise and thoroughly at the same time. And so, yeah, we're looking just to generally, we've got some ideas on some artistic projects in and around the community. Similar to what was outside of, of the library, sort of the, the, I would, I mean, street art that was there to sort of bring awareness to polluting the Black River Creek that was outside of the, the library, if anybody knows what. There's like a fish on the cement. And so we're looking to sort of be creative but also honor sort of the story of those who came before us here in Cross Plains. And then at the same time, rewarding those people who live in this community who, who have the artistic abilities and desire to put something like this together. And so, the aspiring anti-racists are definitely interested in trying to pursue a mural or awareness campaign similar to what was, was outside of the, the library in and around town. And so we're looking for some feedback on the processes for that. And then lastly, before we open to questions and maybe responses on that point, just if the village needs extra hands or support with, with things that are happening in and around the community, we are an organization that would love to help out and just sort of embrace, you know, what it means to be from Cross Plains. So thank you so much for your time this evening and thank you Melissa for supporting the cause tonight.
I guess I'll start out with giving you some processes that would need to happen. We can't do a whole lot of discussion tonight because this was more of a presentation information. But on your first point of advisory committee, what would be helpful on that? We have kind of a skeleton of it, but have a proposal on, you know, what the committee, you see as the purpose and the objectives of it. You know, get that down on paper and then we can put it on the agenda and talk about that. And then on the art projects, it would be the same thing where you would write up a proposal on where and what you'd like to do and then depending on where that is, we probably send it to one of the committees and then it would then go from committee to the board. That would be the process for those two, for those two items. The only thing, well, I'll just open it up, anybody else have comments or statements? Bill?
So I actually have a lot of comments and I'm not gonna bring them all up to this, to this meeting, but I agree with Jay that, that, you guys need to bring all this through the village board as a proposal. I, your premises that you, that you stated tonight, you need to back up with a little bit more fact than, than just kind of throwing them off there would be really helpful for the village. A little bit of history about Angela Davis would be helpful, so you're using her as a reference. And, and again, you know, if you're doing an art project, you know, what's the possibility to be involved, where do you want to do that? So, so I fully agree with Jay on that.
Yeah, thanks for presenting today, this is an interesting and exciting topic and I appreciate the work that has been put into it to this point. Yeah, there's, I would just ask the committee, the group, to think about whether or not you want to be an advisory committee or whether or not you want to work like many of the other organizations in town and not be advisory to the board directly or have a channel through this governmental process. It may be wise for you to do that as a, as like a friend group or a group outside of the board. If you do think that you want to have impact on policy that the board governs, that controls, then, then I think going the advisory route may be, may be a better option. So I think you should think about both of those options before you present in the future. Good luck. And I guess I have just one more comment where I want to thank you for, for doing this and the work you have. The other thing that I think you should maybe just think about if you're gonna go down the route of making recommendations. I'm a little concerned with the name of the group because once you get to policy, there's gonna be people on both sides of what you're recommending. And I would hate to make people think that if they disagree with your group, that they're racist. So I, I just, I think it's great for self-education and self-analysis and all that with that name for the time. But once you start proposing changes, I just don't want people to feel that they differ with you, that they're somehow bad person. So just, I, that'd be just something to talk about, I guess, or think about.
But I think this group thinks that, I mean, because I talk to people from this group and they feel that there's some racism within the village within the community.
Yeah.
And I think that's a wrong premise. So I agree with you that racism is really a bad use in government policy. You know, and if they want to see change, whether that be, you know, within a government republic or democracy or, or, or socialist group, then they need to be more clear about what they're putting to them.
Anybody else? Well, thank you Melissa and Andy for taking the time out and sharing that with us. We'll afford to hear you in the future.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, everybody.
All right, we're gonna go to number three, discussion impossible action regarding the Lions Club Legacy Pavilion Project. So we have Kevin here.
We gotta freeze the page with Kevin. Setting the bar pretty high for you guys.
Yeah, I think this is all.
Too much time on our hands. It's not a thirty-minute agenda tonight, sorry. All right, so my name's Kevin Engleen, I'm a resident here in Cross Plains on Main Street and I am on the board for our Cross Plains Lions Club. And this, tonight, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the Pavilion Legacy Project, so. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yeah.
Okay. So we can go to the next slide. I'm gonna read to you because this might be a little difficult for some of you guys to, to read on, on the wall there, but for many years now, the Cross Plains Lions Club has been focused on a legacy project. And part of the legacy project and, and what was conceived out of this is bringing forth an idea related to some type of shelter or club that, or sorry, shelter or pavilion that could be placed within public space that would have the Lions attached to it. The Lions, meaning in this case that we would help fund and/or manage the development of some type of donation. So again, longstanding chapter in club here in Cross Plains and we've been fundraising for many years, four plus years on this specific legacy project related to the vision that we had and I'll talk to you a little bit about that. What you see on the far right is, just over a year ago now, November twentieth of twenty nineteen, you'll see that we brought this forward to, or prior to that, we brought it forward to the Park and Rec Committee, talked about the vision, just like I'm gonna be doing tonight. And from there, we did hold, in partnership with the Park and Rec Committee, we held a vision session that was community-based. We had a lot of input from residents as well as other businesses in terms of what some of the things are. Again, type of structure that they'd like to see, we had several options, the type of events and activities that they'd love to see. This structure being used for as well as amenities that they'd like to see and any upgrades to the park in general. And the focus right now is on Xander Park for an outdoor venue location. Again, we put that through public input just to kind of test it and why don't we go to the next slide? So let's talk about the vision, I think it's really difficult anytime you look at a structure and someone says, why are you doing this, right? I think you, you have to have a vision for why we're doing this. So what we said is, we have some natural assets and, and gathering stream side, which if you haven't noticed it, I walk it at least once a day, the boardwalk and, and the creek side in the downtown area. You'll see an increased number and you'll see really the community gathering there. Gathering as individuals, but it's definitely a social place where people wave from a safe distance at the moment during the pandemic, but it really is a gathering spot and, and it's quite an asset that we have now downtown. Streamside Pavilion is what we're looking at as a capstone to a multi-year downtown Xander Park Improvement Project. Everyone knows of the investments that have been made down there already. And as we think about a centerpiece and kind of a capstone type project, that's where the Lions got, kind of conceived the idea and really got attracted and then started working on this. For the larger downtown revitalization plan, we think that this would be a huge asset. Our vision is to reimagine the downtown as a year-round hub, not just a seasonal hub for community activities, outdoor recreation, education, events, private functions, and just as important as all of those on an individual basis that it supports local business commerce and ensures and ties into some of the branding and themes that, that we see are natural assets that we want to highlight as a, as a community. Pavilion will be, would be a multi-use structure along the meandering Black River Creek, again, a natural asset that we and others take advantage of. Next slide. So the immediate and future impacts. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on here, I'll let you guys read this, it's in the packet, but the project has a potential, we feel, to enhance retention for not only local employers but to attract new businesses and residents to our community. Again, it's the long-term investment by multiple stakeholders within the village. Local government, businesses, and others to create this desired venue that complements our brand and really takes advantage of that space along the creek and Xander Park in general. Again, why, why is this economically important? Just touch on a couple of them. We've seen it, we've seen other case studies and we did some studies with similar type size communities where riverfront and downtown areas that have natural assets can really turn those into positive recruitment of businesses but more importantly, you're, you're really putting a hyper-focus on these natural assets that are free. There's, there's no cost to the stream, there's no cost to our Ice Age Trail. These are natural assets that were gifted to us and it would be great if we could take advantage of them and build a brand around them. That's that second, second bullet point there, village brand, further embrace the crossroads, quite literally, of our natural assets between the bluffs and the stream and all the recreation that's associated with those. Hiking, biking, fishing, those are the things that we've already highlighted on our signs. If you haven't noticed that, coming in and the banners that we have, we identified that through visioning sessions in years past. And this to me, and, and that venue and that location further supports our commitment as a village to that area. So this Creek Side Pavilion is the ideal setting, we think, for public events, festivals, private gatherings as well as other things that we do down there currently. Trout days right now, we spend down there, that's, that's our, that's our home for the Lions. Ice Age Trail events, needless to say, is, is the home as well. And then all the other recreation activities that do happen down there as well. We did get some feedback and, and if you look at other neighboring communities as well as other communities that have some of these natural assets, there's, there's, we're untapped in our opinion. Art fairs, music series, music on the creek, outdoor movies, festivals, food carts, fun run, dog walks, winter downtown festivals, you know, fish boils. It's endless what we could do with a venue that's dedicated to not only the businesses but also, again, tapping into highlighting some of our natural assets. Next slide, please, Bill. So the vision unfolding, this is, I'm just gonna run you through a series of, I think pictures sometimes speak better than myself behind a mask. So the vision unfolding, what you see there is a picture's stream side from twenty nineteen in Trout Days. Us in the site location that, that we were proposing and we are proposing for a larger pavilion to be built. We did have it as a music venue, we did it. We did it last, last minute. We brought a stage in from St. Francis, threw it on the ground and then tried to create what we thought would be a vision going forward for a more established venue in that location. It was, again, highlighted through not just a nice day, but music. We had probably five bands and probably four hours of music that was, that was streamside. Next slide. So again, if you look at other communities that are doing this or have done this, these are just some pictures and we can go through these pretty quick, Bill. You can do movies, some of, you know, again, using the pavilion, using some type of structure like this as a centerpiece for activities. Movies in the park, arts and food events that could be built around, built around the creek and better utilizing that space down there as well. Natural resources and wellness events, some of those, like the Ice Age Trail Alliance and, and Trail Days are currently being held instead of, you know, kind of a, a field of pop-up tents, we, we have some main registration stations that, that can be used for, for run-walk events. As well as something as simple as a handful of people taking advantage of yoga in the park along the street, streamside. So these are just some ideas that you guys can look at and you probably can think of a, a lot more. But when you have a structure and you have a centerpiece like this, it is a rallying point for activities. And you can see here that other communities in partnership with the Lions Club have done just that, be it music, recreation, or other. So this is not new concept. It's not a wild and crazy idea. It's something that I think we should strongly consider. And we have a proposal that we want to talk about right now related to what that structure might look like based on our own kind of research as well as feedback that we received from the community. So what you're looking at right now is, is the proposed pavilion that we would like to move forward with in partnership with the village. And when I say we, it's, again, the Lions Club of Cross Plains. It's a 30 by 40 structure. The structure was based off, not just kind of the look and feel of it, but aesthetically how it fits into that space as well. We did have some architects and, and others who looked at that and took in the factor that line of sight as you're looking down the stream to not impede the, the view of either the bluffs, but really frames the, the streamside. So there was some thought that went into this as well as the roof pitch on it, which better amplifies music. So these are the multiple, when we talk multi-use, it's not, what we're looking at here, it's not just a shelter that, that keeps the rain off you, but driving rain will always come into a shelter. And we're not looking at just throwing a couple picking tables under something to protect yourself from the shade or have you, you under it from the shade. We're looking at something that is truly a community asset that can be used by multiple clubs, private or public. Other shelter pavilion options considered, yeah, it's endless what you can come up with if you Google pavilion or shelter. All day long, you can look at these. And I only know it because all day long I have. So feel free to, to explore, educate yourself on shelters. I am not in construction and not even close to being an expert, but I can tell you that, again, based on feedback and what we think fits into that space nicely is that size and that style. And we want something that's sustainable, that's going to last for many years since it is a legacy project by the Lions Club. Other things that, sort of, Bill, real quick, just like note a couple of things at the bottom there. It's endless when you think about add-on options and, and funding. As examples here, you know, between running electrical, how big of a slab do you want it? Do you want it elevated or not elevated, ground level accessible? Or not accessible, all parts of it. Fixed grills and garbage cans and recyclables. Those are things that in addition to the structure that you can do at any point in time or you can do upfront. Right? So there are improvements that it can always be made to, if you want to call it Lego pieces being added to a structure. And that's how we're looking at this, is what Lego pieces are essential to, to start and, and say, we built a shelter. But at the same time, make it reasonable that you can add other Lego pieces on. And some of those might be grills, tables, or columns that are bricked, or other, other features that we want to highlight down there as well. All right, thank you, Bill. Next one. So known key steps and roles. This has taken several years to even get probably to this conversation that we're having right here. Probably based on that first check mark I have there, which is several village and Lions Club leaders have met for like, at least the last 24 months to discuss the scope and designs for this project. It's not simple to think about. It's not simple to gain consensus. So really where our focus has been is what do we think is, and I use the term minimal viable product. What is it that we want to see down there that we think is worth an investment and worthy of taking and utilizing village space along a pristine creek? That's the way I think about it. Anything less than that, in my opinion, is either not worth it or would be counterproductive to what we're trying to accomplish. So Lions' proposal was presented to and reviewed by the Village Park and Rec Committee. Again, that Rec Committee coordinated public input session. Those things are done. Check. Village Board Review and Vision and Proposal. Note the date, that's us here right now. Exciting. So when we go, go look left and right, the Lions Club, right? What is it that we're doing relative to what is it that the village is doing? He's not set in stone, but I can tell you what's been done, is everything checked there. The Lions Club developed the initial concept proposal. We outlined our vision and design, and design draft. We proposed that through PRC. We made a commitment that this is not necessarily the final design, nor its cost approval. It's merely an alignment on the vision and the concept and the design parameters. What might be project scope? That's why we asked for input. What's important to, to everyone? And then what is, just brainstorming, what are funding options? How can we pull this off? We went through that process. What we haven't gone through then is bringing forth this revised donation amount that the Lions feels we can commit to as a fixed dollar amount as of now, in which I'll talk about on the next slide. When I go over to the village, the village side of this, again, Park and Rec led the visioning session and recommendation process. You can see that was just over a year ago. What we're asking, the Lions Club are seeking and looking at the village to do is help lead the project management of this park space, which is owned by the village. And how does this fit into the master plan of not only that park, but the structure itself? We feel like is obviously needs, needs village input in and a level of approval. This includes any RFP process for site preparation, which, again, do we even know, is there a feasibility study that's done that we can even build on there? If so, what are the requirements for footings and concrete and construction? And how can we work with the village on staging, staging this out? So if you can't afford everything, you can at least afford what we call, again, that minimum viable product and talk about how in years to come, we can continue to make improvements to that structure based on needs. Park and Rec, in our opinion, would work with the Lions to address project costs and prioritize space scope work, just like I talked about, and partner with the Lions on capital fundraising campaign. So, which I'll talk about here in a second. And last but not least, any grant work that would also help offset village investments is what we want and are seeking village responsibilities or roles to be. And then this is the last slide, I promise, is what is the investment? So there's key, key components here. There's concrete, footings, and pad. This is all with the assumption that the village has deemed it, when working with con, some type of contractor or some type of third party, that it's a viable space to develop or even build this on. Assuming it is, there's going to be concrete footing and, and a pad that's needed. To us, that's a fixed cost based on size. Whether you put a pop-up line on it or you put a, you know, $500,000 shell on it, you need a piece of concrete and it needs to not move during a flood. So regardless of the structure design or what type of materials you put on top of it, that's needed. That estimate is TBD because we have no idea based on what those surveys would find. Structure. I showed you a picture of it earlier, the 30 by 40 pre-manufactured steel roof and stained tongue and groove decking, which is the ceiling, a medallion that, that shows the arch of some name to be determined, electrical cutouts, which stayed here for any electrical work that you'd want to do. Going on two years ago now, we, we received from Polygon an estimate that was about $140,000. Remember, these are engineered plans that, and prefabricated, custom-made, in this case, for this project. So a kit. Additional revised negotiated quote, we didn't negotiate. We didn't, we had no idea what costs are today. But if we think about it and look at it, it's about $140,000 than it was investment for the steel, again, steel structure that we think has, and steel roof that would weather well, if you want to put it that way. Installation, it's not included in the manufacturer's cost, but it can be done through a lot of creative ways. The Lions can assist in sourcing this local effort in partnership with the village. Maintenance, why is this any different than any other shelter in a park? So we're not factoring that into the construction cost. Nor do we feel like it should be a, a factor in, in making this decision as far as an investment goes. Initial estimated investment, then, the Lions at this point, based on creative fundraising through Trout Days and as you know, thousands of brats and many other creative ways that the, the Lions have been able to receive and gain, gain dollars for, for this project and give back to the community. Over 40 years, we've been doing this. We feel comfortable at this point committing to a $50,000 fixed contribution. Then the question is, what is the village's responsibility and what are, what are we asking? At this point, there's an estimated budget ask of $125,000 to the village with options to offset final costs and/or address add-on features. So $175,000 if you want to think about it like that. And I think you can, you can get creative to your blue in the face and we have been blue in the face many times talking about this. The village staff have worked to seek grant funding, downtown revitalization, economic development, whatever. If there's an option there, then why not seek it? That's something that should be sought. Again, these are things that would offset the $125,000 cost. Or if the village and the community is comfortable with $125,000 regardless for an investment like this, then additional funds game could go towards some of those additional features. The one note that I have there, which I think is probably the most important one under this section, is the Park and Rec Committee or the village in general and the Lions Club will establish further work and with community stakeholders to mount a significant fundraising effort. That would look like a silent solicited capital fundraising campaign that the Lions would lead and/or an official public campaign for the construction of this facility. We've had a lot of interest from a lot of organizations that either have, are ready, or want to make a pledge. It's difficult for someone to make a pledge or an organization or some group to make a pledge on something that they don't even have a picture of. So that's where the vision comes in. We have to show them what vision looks like, what we think done looks like. And through all those donations, private donations, and civic group contributions, we want to see where we're going to land. But we're asking the village to make a commitment to partner with the Lions Club on this long-term village investment. So approach to addressing the funding shortcuts, well, that's not uncommon. I don't know a construction project that's ever happened that has been truly on, on budget and didn't have some type of budget issue. So following formal fundraising campaign, we reach a, a final agreed upon design and construction. If we need to make concessions on what the design looks like, be it size, materials, or other, then we do that. But let's reach out to the community, business and other with a partnership between the Lions Club and the village and see if we can bring forth what we think is a huge asset to the community and will be something to build on in the downtown, what we think economic and revitalization area. That's all I have.
Well, thank you very much, Kevin.
You bet.
Just thank you so much, though. Just a couple of good things about the project. As far as curvy goals. This is me, that one together.
Yeah, I agree.
And we don't, okay, just, but just, just throwing it out there. And then the other thing is, have you thought about doing any kind of match for Congress or, let's say, I was going to, like, I don't need $1,000 and then try to do a match, like, anything else that comes with a match?
Yeah, I think some of those creative fundraising campaigns, be it by a brick and other things that the library and, and other organizations, the memorial, you know, a legion was done that way. So I think there's some creative fundraising campaigns or efforts that can be taken. Part of it is the commitment to do it. And then how do you offset, do you use that to offset costs? And then real quick on the parking. I, I think that the parking, in my opinion, and in our opinion, is a non-factor. And I always say that because we have community events down there today. We have a parking study that, that's done. We have some businesses and other creative means to, we think, get people in and out of there. We do it on Trout Days. We're not looking at trying to hold events that have thousands of people, but hundreds and dozens is what we're seeking. If it's going to be a World's Fair of, of old, then, then yeah, maybe that's not, not the venue. So we wouldn't quite be looking at, at a centralized place to, to hold that many people.
I agree with that.
All right. I got Bill, Kevin, you want? Hey, Bill. So this, this whole proposal that about four years ago, and then was done in PRC. I think it was like, probably was brought up initially. And I loved it then, I just love it today. I think it's, I think it's the spark to get, to get our village moving forward and as far as revitalization, I think it's a good investment for us. So one of the things that we talked about back then, which I think is still a concern, and I don't know where we are with that, is, is electricity. Because if you want to make a, a true venue where you want to bring in bands and have art fairs and food festivals, you're going to need electricity.
Yep.
And right now, there's no means of getting that over there from the north side, obviously, to the crickets there. There is a supposed meat, there is a beans from, from the south side, from suburban, you know, but that's something that we need to look into. Also, I think that is going to be part of this cost that, you know, unless that's something that's already been talked, is discussed.
It's been brought up many times, to your points, you know, over the four years and of recent, still. Electrical is something that I don't feel is, is required. And I always say that day one. I don't think that's a showstopper. As an example, we ran an entire band for an entire day of amplifiers and soundboards off a single Honda generator without changing the gas. Yeah, yeah. And it was not, we had a backup larger one that the Ice Age provided us and we never had to use it. So one, one powered that. So I mean, that's just, you know, relatively speaking, it works for bands off a generator that you don't even hear, which is, which is pretty remarkable. I didn't realize that until it actually happened, that it would work. Related to electricity as a whole, though, the rest of it, we talked about and what we want to do is make sure that whatever we build, that we factor that in. So if it's not day one that electricity's in, conduits run, electrical, you know, conduit and, and boxes are, are built into the structure day one. So when it is time to run or if there's a creative way of getting it in there, it's not a barrier in the structure.
I'm sorry. Hey, Mike. So, so is there opportunity for grant money for, for this type of thing?
Sorry, trying to get this unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right. As far as grants, I mean, I, I haven't looked into it real, real deep. But as Kevin had discussed, you know, talking about economic development, there's always opportunity within that. So if we can show that, we can look up some other venues. Now, coming from a park side of things, I don't believe any of this would fall under, you know, land and water or any other previous grants that we've received, you know, the park grant or those things. But, but we could look into that. And I think even within the proposal that we've kind of put together in discussions about, you know, working with Snyder or any other groups, it, it kind of can lay that out for us as well.
Cool, thank you. Okay, let me just, I'm going to go Sarah, Kevin, and then. Okay, let me just, I'm gonna go Sarah, Kevin, and then uh.
And then I'll put on, and you guys.
Oh.
Uh so if we're looking for any money for development, uh you can develop our our revitalization program. A lot of times, they will beg or and and environmental assessment and or what time. But that's one of my biggest concerns here, is that it is, you know, what time, uh which could, so just, just one more.
All right, Sarah, then Kevin.
Uh thanks, one thing I just wanted to get get out of with this. Kevin, okay, sorry, no, his name's Mike.
It's a duel, yeah.
Was that we had kind of talked about, you know, there's the big picture, and then we don't want to stall this type of development project and going through the biggest. That is thing, you know, starting basic without electrical, without a bathroom, just, you know, these could be projects. Um if it's successful down the road, or just additional funding down the road to add, you know, permanent, or something like that. But just to to start with something very simple like the structure, is kind of what I remember, I always spend a while.
Mm-hmm.
Um and not necessarily planning now for everything that could possibly be in the future. And then I just had a crazy idea, is this the kind of thing I could have a solar roof? That could provide a solar energy to the V structure itself?
Based on my knowledge of solar, yes. Which is very little, by the way.
Let me ask him, so that.
Do we?
Well, Kevin. Thanks, Kevin, for the presentation. Um yeah, really excited about the project, have been for, I was at that same bill, mill, the same organ, heart's been four years ago or so. Um yeah, I think the excitement's there, the two issues of zoning, you know, whether it's floodplain funding, maybe. Uh are the biggest issues. Uh zoning, we do have control over, right? This board has control over whether or not we want to work around or find variances or reasons to to get around that. So we have complete control over that. Um I think knowing some of those answers, getting some of the engineering, getting some of the drawings, is it easy to get around that or is it difficult? I think that's one of the things we need to find out. Uh and then secondly, about funding, um there are grants, there are park infrastructure grants, there are also economic development grants. Um the floodplain may get in the way of some of those, of course, we don't know if we apply, if we will get them or not, but there are grants out there. And um I think if we can package this with other economic development in and around downtown, such as Park Lot. Um or other developments uh along Main Street, it would be a good part of a larger project. Um where you had parking uh and signage, uh that was developed with the shelter, so the part of the legal project. So I think, I'm very supportive, Kevin, thanks to Lions for for being a good village.
Welcome, thank you.
Bill?
Oh, uh I just wanted to begin to speak to the whole thing, and I, I think that we're thinking about here. Uh before we get too far into the project's flow, uh making sure that we're we're kind of crossing it off the list. We want to make sure that that whatever structure that we've built here uh is low blood potential or low blood damage. Uh if there's, uh that's that's one of the questions that need to be answered. You know, I think that is, I know the states here, the toughest requirement here that we're gonna have to meet is whether or not to have any of that. To a floodplain and a floodway, uh so not only, not only that, it is a floodway of uh like a creek, creek. So. Yeah. So the specific language that I I am worried about here is under eighty-five all night, is possible destruction and increasing floodwater. So we need a certified engineering stamp on on whatever plans that come up. Uh if a project is not a strong flow. Or increasing the region. Uh that's that's one thing that I'm worried about there. And then uh again, because then, because then we're going to have to, 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 to. And so not only are we having to answer some questions of that, and being Kevin to to your. Your comments about whether or not we control that. Invariance from this ordinance here comes from the Board of Local Appeals, which would be quite a judicial body. At this, this quarter point, but, you know, they go off, uh, you know, the way of the law here. And then, Mary, you know, it's the onset of. Uh, you know, if we permit ours ourselves rebuilding in the floodway, how do you then enforce your ordinance with others who want to build it? So you're you're opening that wise, and these are things that you have the building board and have the regulator of what they, uh, coming on, needs to consider. So that's just, just the warning that I.
Michael?
Well, I'd like to say that. Uh the project is a good project on this uncertain of the location. Following everything with Bill said, the location of it being located in the floodplain, replacing it on the large last green section of land in that park. A lot of it was lost when the area was re, was when the creek was uh remeandered.
Mm-hmm.
And to that large open space, when it's when something is not there, it has a lot of utility, it can be used for a lot of different purposes. When something is placed there, it loses that flexibility. Like you saw, you put a stage there and, you know, other groups can do other things. The the parks and rec places, uh fires there and cook smores on that location. Granted, it's just such a nice open space, and if you look next to the creek, the flood issues, that might not be the best place.
Other, uh huh. I guess I just can't, two, uh one, this is going to be a big investment, I think. Uh a hundred and seventy-five is probably a little low on this, when you look at the structure, a hundred and forty. Uh you're looking at, that doesn't include the concrete, doesn't include the engineering. Uh and we already looked at phase one and phase two of what people are talking about, the engineering. And the site uh planning, that's twenty-five grand right there. Uh so I just, that that's one that we have to really think about. That's a big investment, it's not going to be covered by insurance, so if it gets washed away the next year, that's it. You know, we'd have to rebuild and 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 that, so that's one thing. The thing about about parking, I mean, with Kevin, I'm not too concerned, there's a lot of places. Um that don't want to have a lot of parking right next to the venue, quite frankly. People have to walk from the mall or something, they see more of the village, stuff like that, so I don't think that's a negative. My biggest is, where are people going to go to the bathroom? Okay, uh we're not going to be able to add uh uh a bathroom to that shelter because art seems pretty. Pretty strict, pretty strict on putting sewer and water and floodways, floodline. They're pretty much, that's a no-go for them. So then we have to look at, if we're not going to build uh a facility, can we bring in fortified? Then you look at, can we bring them in for a good bath? Or can we bring some in and just leave them in the park? And, you know, it's a beautiful park, and you want fortified, so I think, you know, I think there needs to be some detailed discussion on on that part. Because I know businesses are not going to want, you know, people coming in and out of their businesses to go to the bathroom. So, you know, that's, those are the things that I think we have to look at. I love the idea, and I love the location if it wasn't in the floodplain. I'm with Michael, to me, I would love, and I, and this is just spitballing it, and I know it's totally different from where you guys are looking. Me up against the hill on Fair Park would be the place. Huge room, we got two bathrooms facilities, we're gonna build a new bathroom, you know, where well two is. So, you know, I know you guys want to be on the lake, and I think bringing people to the village, even if it's the Fair Park. Is just as, just as good as bringing them down to the creek. But it preserves that park a little bit, Fair Park is our big offense park, you know. So I I just throw that out, that I'm kind of like, but I think what we need to do here, because the Lions have been involved in this for a very long time. What I'd like to see tonight is what are the next steps we're going to take as a village and working with the Lions? Um opening that up, what people think is the next step, Bill. So I just, I think if we just have a, at least an understanding or a or a commitment to move forward. That this is a project that we definitely want to consider and we want to go forward with. I don't think we, I don't want to commit to a dollar amount or anything like that, but I would like to commit to say, especially for Alliance, to invest four years into this. To say, yeah, we fully support Alliance doing, and um and we, at least we have a commitment that this is what we want to do in the future. Sarah?
So, um I'd like to ask Mike to, Mike Atkins, Kevin, and explain, you know, what we're looking at here. Uh with the report we got from the. What's the name of the agency that did the?
Snyder.
Snyder, yeah, because it looks like, I mean, I looked at that, but I didn't find it.
No, they didn't do a report.
They did.
That was the RFP, that was the bid to do some work.
So I guess with that stated, I guess I would like to make a motion that we um move forward with. With uh looking into the engineering costs for Alliance Club Legacy Pavilion Project at the undercar. How's the better?
Second. All right, let's uh have a motion and a second for the engineering. So let me, I've got to open up for discussion. So I just want to make sure when you're making that motion, it's just the engineering. Oh, is is this a feasible spot and what would have to happen to make it?
Yes.
So it's very limited to that.
Limited to the engineering proposed, just the engineering costs to assess whether this could even happen. And if it were to happen, a breakdown of the cost, the, the cost. With that.
Yeah, I just, just so it's, there's full understanding. I didn't put that original RFP onto the board to be approved, because what it was, was engineering, site development, fundraising and stuff. So my concern was, if they found out we couldn't do it, why are we paying for all that other services? That's what was included in that twelve thousand dollar bill. So my whole thing is, I I said, no, that's, I don't want to pay twelve thousand for a guy to make a phone call to the DNR and they say you can't do it. You know what I mean? So I just want, so we're all clear on what we're asking for, we're just asking for the engineering.
Engineering, please, Bill.
Okay.
Yeah, uh Mike.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mike.
Uh thank you. Uh real quick, I think what what Sarah's really looking for, what I think would be best to start this, would be the feasibility study. Uh from either Snyder or go out to another RFP for this, but a feasibility study, that's also going to give us a cost estimate. Now, that's why it's all kind of paired together uh from the RFP aspect from what we did before. But we need to know the, you know, there has to be the design aspect and kind of everyone understanding we're under the same. Same different criteria that we want to use uh to put this cost estimate together. So. In my opinion, the first step for us would be a feasibility study, and, you know, if we stop it there for this, for this time, that's fine, come back to the board of it. And then discuss phase two or phase three, kind of moving forward.
I know that's interesting.
That's nice.
Yeah, but I, okay, when you, Mike, when you say feasibility, what does that include?
Sorry, sorry, Jay, what was that?
What, what, if, if, when you say feasibility study, what are you including in that?
So feasibility would be more of, they would look at the site, which they've already done, they've come out and looked at the site with me. Uh but they would make sure that an open-air type structure uh of the size that we're discussing is. Is the the slab and or the shelter itself is, it can be possibly, can be put there in that site. Um and and everything that kind of Kevin has shown you today is what we're looking for, is that possible? Is it possible to build? And then if so, you know, what are the different permitting and or processes we have to go through, uh the extra costs within that? And then uh kind of give us a concept of what that, what that would, what that would be.
Yeah, I'm following all except for the the concept part, I mean, I like everything you said, I think that's the, I'm just not sure what you mean by concept. If you're using what the Lions have given you to do your delta relation.
Well, I just thought that you'd, you'd want a conceptual idea of what that would look like and what it would be there. But if you don't want that part of it, they don't, I mean, we wouldn't have to do that. I guess I I would just be fine with going with the feasibility side of things and making sure that it can be located in that space.
Okay, uh administrator came.
Yeah, I'm just looking at, hey, Mike, I'm just looking at the concept, like, plan here on phase one.
What's that?
It's on the, are you on the computer?
Uh no, I don't have one currently.
So, you know, on task one, or task two of the phase one of concept plan, so the site survey and inventory, now, four thousand, hundred.
Yeah, topography survey, I believe would be, yep.
That's that's all that we're talking about now, not the remaining, about in uh page one here.
You're cutting out, Bill, or I can't hear you directly, sorry. Uh if you look at the Snyder and Associates, um I believe you had that in part of the PDF. Uh you could look up what phase one would have included, and within that phase one are different tasks. And if you look within the tasks and even just decide what parts of it that you want, we could do a time and material with Snyder, kind of moving forward on the pieces that you would want.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's what we're talking about here. We're talking about test number two under the concept one site plan.
Yeah, I think you're.
No, I think you're, I think you're fine.
I think you're fine.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we all have the understanding, because a lot of time, we go that people have different understanding. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands what we're voting for.
Yes, now that is the site survey, I think, and for an analysis of whether it's feasible to do.
Yes. All right, do you have what you need, Bill?
You gonna vote on that?
Oh, we will vote on it.
Is that why I have that?
Okay, roll call, please.
Uh trustee Francois?
Yeah.
Trustee Xander? Trustee Pamakowski? No. Trustee Thucius? Yes. Trustee Catabalder? Yeah. Trustee Brosias? Yes. President Langfeld? Yes. Officer Carey?
All righty, thank you, Mike, thank you, Kevin, appreciate you taking the timeout. All right, number four, discussion and possible action regarding traffic safety at the intersection of Bluewood Street and Rainbow Street.
All right, so this was an item that was on our previous agenda, I went back to Public Safety Committee for review. Um trustee Xander is here from the Public Safety Committee, and also we have Chief Wesker, um as they have a recommendation to make. Chief, do you want to give a go on this?
Good evening, everybody, can you hear me?
Yeah, it does.
Okay, so it did go back to committee, and we did just that, we weighed all the options. Creating uh Ulaia as a one-way, we also considered uh doing speed bumps. Um we also talked again about uh creating some additional no parking. To get our uh recommendation, we invited the uh citizens that reside in that immediate area that would be affected by. The uh additional no parking and and the other items that we discussed. And uh we also um spoke to um Jerry Gray, who had an extensive amount of experience with regards to that. To that street and all streets. And we ultimately came back with the same recommendation, with exception of, there is a section that we would like to not. Um have turned into no parking, just because uh one of the residents that live there uh does need uh access to parking. And so the recommendation um is to create additional no parking on one side of the street. And so the recommendation um is to create additional no parking on one side of the street um on each side that's already uh labeled yellow and then create a additional no parking uh right between two driveways, which includes the uh mailboxes, uh just to kind of widen it up. Uh, one of the, the residents that lives uh directly in that area, um, some of her trees were in violation of that triangle um ordinance, uh she has since cut them back and I believe we are now in compliance and it has opened that up quite a bit. Um, however, we still, the street is just very congested and uh we believe that parking, um, no parking will help alleviate some of that. Um, so we did work with, with the original uh person who filed the complaint, um, and we did take her recommendation um to assist us. And I believe we have a, a well-thought-out and talked-through plan. Lori?
Yeah, uh, I, I feel like everyone um is kind of was like, and makes everyone feel comfortable with the decision. And if there's still something needed, we could always um eliminate more of that perp. So, uh, Public Safety Committee felt like this is the best decision at this time to do.
Alright, before we go into discussion, let's have a motion.
I'm just gonna answer the motion.
Yep.
Okay, the motion, all of the motion, except um the press point, police department and the drug scene, the public safety committee recommendation for the um for the yellow line for the adding no parking, Ulaia, Lewis Street, the hall of the record, go on to.
Wait one second, alright, discussion. Bill? So can we just bring up a map real quick, just to see what we're talking about, do that one quick?
Yeah, just give me a minute here, I can do that.
Yeah, please.
Well, Bill, we're talking about the same corner.
No, we're doing, this was just uh per the email reference design.
Yeah, but it wouldn't be the same ordinance.
Well, the third No, this one is for no parking.
Right, the visibility issue.
Oh, yes, yeah. Oh, I, I'm sorry.
Yeah, same standard.
Right.
We're talking about this, this intersection right here?
Yes.
Lewis Street and Ulaia, and then the piece that we're talking about, where, right there. I believe on, on all part, two driveways, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's correct, where you're pointing, Bill, that's, that's the two driveways, that will just be no parking. And then across the street where that triangle is, there's already no parking in that, uh, obviously in that corner, we're just going to extend it 10 feet. 10 feet both directions and the owner and the, the, the citizen that lives in that home is not opposed to that. She, she sees that as a, as a parking issue as well.
Any other questions, Michael? So that corner, it's only going an additional 10 feet down each street, which
Yes.
isn't probably as far as Bill even gone on that map, it's probably halfway between 10 feet and yellow, that. Well, there's already yellow there, so it's 10 feet beyond, yeah, right, yellow is right, I was just thinking through. And then it's, you know, across the street, right?
The others, the other side of that driveway, um, so that was also recommended to be yellow. Um, but that's something that we have changed just to accommodate the resident that uh resides in that immediate area that does need that parking for personal reasons.
Yeah, oh, Kevin? Hey, Chief, right, um, this is Kevin, I'm just wondering if the trees are, if that corner is now fully in compliance with our ordinance?
I believe it is.
Thank you.
Bill? So wasn't one of the issues that came up prior to the consultation was the speed of people going down Ulaia? Like people residing down that road, then using either bypass or main street?
Yeah, there was, there was that complaint that there is some speeders. Um, I have personally sat on that street and have not been able to find a single speeding violation that I would stop for. Now, people do travel through there about 25, between 25 and, and 29 miles an hour, which 29 is pretty fast for that area because it's such an elbow turn, so it, it could appear that you're traveling a lot faster than that. And so when cars meet, especially in that elbow, it's so congested that I, I'm surprised we don't have a lot of crash data there, um, but people do bypass and go through that area.
So, so a, a, a future, a future suggestion is if this still becomes a problem, um I was in, uh, I was in Eastside Madison yesterday and they have these, you know, 10-foot wide speed bumps. 10-foot, yeah, wide speed bumps that go from curb to curb that seriously slowed me down, uh, slower than I wanted to go. Uh, I mean, I was going at speed limit, but I had to go slower to go over these, these speed bumps. And so if that in the future becomes a problem, I would think that would safety would still be a consideration for putting in those, and that'd be a good testing barrier too for Jerry and Pauline and all of that, so that's just, that's a fight we said. Lori?
We did um discuss that about speed bumps and the concern is that people will just go down that valley street and use that and speed, you know, we're kind of just pushing the traffic down other roads. Because that being a cut through, um, so we did discuss that.
Right, but we want to keep people on the main street too, instead of cutting around and
Right, right, we're deterring them, they'll be on every street, it's like what they're trying to say.
Sure.
You know, so hopefully this works, but we did discuss that.
Right, and I think before, there's, there's lots of equipment out there we can put out to actually calculate how much traffic, what's the speed of them. So I think before we go into something like that, we should probably collect a little bit more data. Oh, I'm just saying There's corners and speed corners that we can put across these roads. We'll get a lot more data and we'll be able to do the cost analysis. I'm all for this, I'm thinking if this still becomes a problem, that we look at alternatives.
Sure. Michael, just a quick question, with the other side of the road where you're going to be painted yellow for no parking, was that just done, you're trying to open up that corner so that a car wouldn't be there and narrows it? That the whole?
Correct, yeah, because that, it, it's so congested if you drive down there.
It's such a right-hand
Right.
corner that if it's tight, then people are going to get involved, road, they're going to
Right, and the upstream, make it just easier to
It opens the road.
Yeah, clear. Alright, Bill, we just have a hand raise here for us. Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Deborah Schultz, first of all, I want to say thank you um for not making that uh spot on Lewis Street, uh, no parking because of my disabled daughter. Um, I would like to know though if it does get to be a discussion as to where, if you guys want to expand the no parking on the other side of Lewis Street there, will I be notified?
Sure.
Of like the discussion, right, of everything going forward? Um, and the only reason why I suggested speed bumps was because I, I didn't want Pauline to have to cut her trees down. Um, I was more concerned about the visibility, but um, you know, I, I think speed bumps would definitely deter people, but I, I, I guess my main concern was the no parking. I didn't want no parking to be able to help me have my car closer for my daughter, so thank you.
You're welcome and thanks for your input. Alright, any other discussion? Alright, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all hold the same. Alright, we're on number five, discussion and possible action regarding Cedar Valley. Let's do one at a time, we're gonna have to roll that.
Yeah, you want me to, you know?
Yeah, go ahead.
So you'll have a part of your packet, uh, number one, both from myself and from, from Cedar Valley. Uh, what I'm going to do here is going to jump to the whole certified agreement, I'll divide, uh, most formally or discredently, uh, 45 on the Cedar Valley subdivision. If you remember that, lot 45 includes all of those areas here. Here, includes all this area here has one single lot under the current development agreement, which require that this lot come in for a come in for a condition used permanent for it gets developed. Um, as part of the negotiation between the developer and Wengra, uh, or the operator of the 40, to stop this lot in order for it to move, there is an easement of the road on the backside of the subdivision to run people of court and through this section of lot 45. They are now requiring that this lot be subdivided into three lots, uh, two developable, both lots and one, what they're calling now Outlot 10. Or that's So that, that in short is the proposal, in order for that to work, there are a number of areas, uh, two from the previous subdivision, the involvement of previous subdivision, or the kind of, fill in the box, and then two additional areas that allow a lot of 45A and 45B. In addition to that, there are a number of, of development, uh, excuse me, agreements that will need to be due to, uh, two, admitting current agreements, devolting agreement, yeah. Admitting the, the respective comments, and then additional agreement for which, um, we would have, uh, Wengra party maintain the public section, or property name in the out of section of running of court. And so, and then with that, a, a potential or a possibility or option for the laws to purchase Outlot 10 in the future once operations stops, um, or Wengra select uh, in the situation of Outlot 10.
Okay, so everybody understands, the reason we have to go through all these all over again is because it used to be one lot and now, out lot, and now it's basically three. So we have to adjust the language and all these documents, just so everybody understands, everything we're doing tonight is tied to lot 45 being split into three.
And it's only to lot 45 that, not any others.
And can you, I'm sorry, can you explain again why, what, what difference is between when you first proposed this?
Yeah, so I raised an offer on the, the, the final lot of the true, but the world where, right? Yeah, all of the area of the highlight of the dark, the whole outline here
Yep.
has one single private lot.
Owned by?
Owned by developer to be sold to
Okay, and that's where the many warehouses were. On top of the hill. Yeah, in the old corner. Yeah. That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, so why is it changing?
Because Wengra wants to make sure they have, I, I'm the ability to own the road to get their trucks out. They don't want to be dependent upon an easement that can change, this way they own it, so they have more control of uh the, the future, that's what they're looking at.
Well, they have, well, they have access, they have
Yeah.
I didn't talk about this before, but so like, I'm, I'll, lot 10, if um the road starts falling hurt, then Wengra gets the paper, because they're the only
Right, that is correct.
Alright, Michael, and so then Wengra is getting rid of all their other easements for that other entrance road, right? The other entrance road is completely going away.
Correct, yes, uh, so Wengra along with a number of other utility have, uh, kind of easements through the middle of this. You know, if you, if you carry this, this lot over, it's, it's
And that's always bad, that's not changed.
No, they're getting rid of that, I think.
They're always going to get rid of it, okay, that's why they want this one to be there. So it's always, this has always, they always have had easement on that Bayron ownership, that's why it's got, it's going from an easement to an ownership. Alright, alright.
And I believe we do have that welcome, attorney for Cedar Valley that's on line here.
Alright, so what we'd like to do is let's, we'll do each one, Bill will give a quick summary of it, we'll do motion, second, discussion, vote. And I believe we're going to do roll call votes on all these, right? Alright, so number, uh, A is approval of the amendment to the Declaration of Commerce and Restriction.
Yeah, so this is an amendment to the, uh, previous preparation of amendment and restriction, uh, basically stating that this, like in the Outlot 10, you know, the third part of excess, easement, uh, utilities. The language is in the packet, I agree that you would like, but uh, basically, in the fact that this Outlot 10 is now restricted to that.
Alright, do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Oh, second, yeah, I got, I'll take Lori on this one. Um, you first, alright, any discussion? Bill? So, I thought the developer was going to own that road, I think I made a mistake, or was that, or I thought that was going to be a private road coming up to the, to the um, uh, storage facility. It was, it was a driveway with an easement for Wengra. So, right, so the only, so for, for accommodating breaking up a lot, so Wengra can all the piece of property rather than have an easement to it? Yep. Okay. Kevin?
Uh, and so they have access, they have a, a public access to a road, right? If it was only an easement, they would have a, a, a piece of land not connected to a public road.
It, it was, uh, the question is they're trying to uh secure uh the future. Uh, when it comes to mining and stuff, there's changes in the laws and stuff, so they want, this gives them more security that they will have access to their uh gravel operation. Alright, any other questions? Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Brosius?
Bill?
Trustee Cattaborder?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Pamakowski?
Yes.
Trustee Xander?
Yes.
Trustee Vanlong?
Yes.
President Langfeld?
Yes. Alright, we're going to knock to B, approval on amendment of the, to the, let me try it again. Approval of the amendment to the development agreement. Do I have a second? Okay, I'm giving Michael this time, do I have a motion and a second, uh, discussion, Lawrence, go ahead and read.
Well, this is to amend the developer's agreement, uh, to basically state that Outlot 10 does not require a condition used permanent, uh, at the area of was previously marked in the current agreement. Uh, meaning of why, since it is now for access, access.
Alright, we're at discussion, any discussion? Alright, roll call, please.
Trustee Xander?
Yes.
Trustee Pamakowski?
Yes.
Trustee Thucius?
Yes.
Trustee Cattaborder?
Yes.
Trustee Brosius?
Yes.
Trustee Vanlong?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, C, approval of the road maintenance, repair, and option to purchase agreement.
I'll go on this one.
Before you motion, you bring it on, okay?
Uh, so this agreement was not included in your packet, it is on the attorney that currently negotiating. are currently negotiating in regards to details of this in concept, what this agreement does and provides that Winger will maintain a public section of Rocky Lot Court as an intersection of what we're initially talking about here, since the road is, will be constructed to take on the heavy load. That Winger, Winger will be placed by asphalt in year fifteen and then ten, every ten years the letter of credit will, will also be calculated at year ten, and posted guarantee for work in year fifteen. So again, the details on it are still being worked on in principle and in concept, disagreeable by Winger, as I heard from our attorney representing the village. So that is a maintenance agreement for the public section of Rocky Lot Court, since the private section of Rocky Lot Court, with the priority held, that would be up to them. They are, Winger will then have an access agreement with lot forty-five A and forty-five B, and then as part of their agreement is an option to purchase Outlot Ten in the future if Winger should cease operation. And so that is, again, to secure a public access.
Want to see if Winger's attorney would like to add anything?
And this is Bill, is there anything that you would like to add? I hope you have this on us? Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Sorry about that, I had to unmute there. No, Bill, I think you're doing a great job explaining it. I don't have any, any additional comments on that.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion? Well, we don't have the agreement, so can we make a motion on it? Sure, it's a kind of deal agreement. And we can make a motion to bring it back when it gets confirmed.
Well, there's some language here that all divided, all that, if possible, please discuss it more tonight and see if they're comfortable with this idea. If so, perhaps you can approve this, approve it, subject to, they are working out the details, final detail. If you want to see the final agreement before we go left, okay, too, but if we can get a feeling on the concept.
All right, I'll ask again, is there anybody that would like to make a motion? All right, I'll make a motion in concept to the agreement, with the understanding it will be brought back before, once the final details are looked out. All right, open up for discussion.
Michael, so then, basically, the question is that they're, they're figuring out, like, what, how many years between re-asking the road or conditions that they get torn up? Is it things like that is what being debated?
All right, so I think right now, of that tougher debate, there's, who determine not whether the repair or not the letter of credit, how the determination of the road in each area is.
Right, what, yeah, what criteria?
Right now, it's based at fifteen years and every ten there. So it's just based on time. Right now, it's time, but then there's the language on there. If it gets bad, they're gonna have this letter of credit that we'd be able to fix it. All right. Any other questions? Kevin?
Yeah, I just, your motion was to, to basically bring it to next meeting, correct?
Well, I, I, you're more confident, I'm not sure if we can work out quite the next one.
I see, okay. But regardless, we're gonna see the entire.
Yeah, we need it beforehand.
Right, this is, I'm unsure of the need of the motion.
Well, the need is because there's no sense in us spending money on your attorney if people don't want to do this at all. We need to give them some guidance that we're on the right path.
But money will be more, the, the experience expense will be more by the developer, to make clear, make that clear.
Yeah, that's fine. All right, anybody else?
Roll call vote, Bill. It's all, I, I, I'm not comfortable with that, Jay. I mean, I just, I would like to see, I would like to see the agreement, even if it's, I mean, I, I, I understand, there's not a need to pass this particular one tonight. I'd like to see it, wait until the attorneys get done, because anything can change. By then, we look at it novel, we look at it again. I just, I'm not comfortable approving this part of it until we see what the public, the attorney said. I'm finally been working on it.
Okay, here's the thing, I, I, the only reason, well, one of the reasons, I think, when you do these, you need to have guidance on moving forward. It's a request from the village attorney asking for some guidance on it. So I think, you know, I'm, I, I don't see any harm in doing it. I mean, we're gonna see the final product, so I don't see the harm in giving them that, hey, we are all in agreement that the public road needs to have be replaced by Winger and not by Winger, so it doesn't fall on the taxpayer. Because right now, that's what it will be. So, to me, this is just saying, yeah, we like the direction you're going, keep going at it, and please bring back the detail when you have it done.
Well, see, that, that's a better motion.
Well, that's exactly what I said.
No, it's, it's not. You said you, you, that you want to prove that, and then based off of, of, seeing what it comes from the attorney, but the first thing you're saying is you're approving it, and then, and then we'll finalize it. That's what I heard.
I said the approval of the concept, okay? That is very different than an approval of a document.
Okay.
The concept is the concept of where they're at and where they want to get to.
Okay.
That's, that's what the motion was. Michael?
And to continue that, the concept is the fact that Winger is gonna be using the public road. The whole idea is whether or not we want to allow the mine to have access to this road surface, just in general. That's what every single one of these things that we're voting on essentially doing.
No, Michael, we've already granted them in earlier documents, but it was under an easement to the public land, to the public road. That has always been part of the development plan. Otherwise, this development wouldn't have gone through. So they needed the current easement for the development. The difference here is Winger wants ownership versus easement, but the trucks were always gonna drive down, always from day one.
So we're just, whether or not we want to grant them ownership to the park, so everything will stay the same, basically.
Well, we're actually adding things. We're adding the maintenance part of it. That was not part of the original easement agreement. Okay. Any other discussion? All right, roll call vote please.
Trustee Calabon?
Yes.
Trustee Lucio?
No.
Trustee Popkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Xander?
Yes.
Trustee Van Koo?
No.
Trustee Rossis?
No.
President Lanko?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, D. Variance request from section eighty-three point one eight to waive the requirement limiting hillside and hilltop development. Okay?
Well, this is, this is a variance, you know, requested, this is same variance that was, had been requested from the developer, creating this, the proposal was for one, for this to be one whole lot. Since the concept of it has changed, or requiring that the developer come in and ask for this variance again, because of change, people have changed here with ownership, is that, the construction plans themselves have not changed, but, the requirements that I disclosed for you have nothing against variance.
All right, do I have a motion? All right, I'll make a motion to approve the request from section eighty-three point twenty, to waive the requirement limiting hillside, hilltop development. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
All right, discussion.
Bill? So, do we need to make that motion for both forty-five A and forty-five B?
That, that variance request is for, for this development has won, so it's not per lot. It's, it's gonna be the same developer here, under a different concept, because right now it's all for one.
Because, I mean, because we're talking hilltop, right? And we just want to make sure that, you know, hilltop is safe ground here in the village, and, and I know we already had back of the rings on the way looking forward, it's want to make sure that we're still protecting the bunch again, based off of what they're planning to do.
Okay, again, the only change.
I understand, but now we have two lots to talk about.
No, we're talking about three.
Well, we're talking about, right.
What's the new line, now it's three?
One to roll.
Well, I know, but it's another lot.
Right, right.
So last, well, this is just to be clear, the most known made earlier in approval of amendment to the developers, at the perspective of management and developer agreement, still requires a lot of forty-five B and forty-five P coming for it. So that's still, that's still the same.
Okay.
The only, only exception that, exception that makes, or is Outlot Ten. You are correct that lot forty-five B and forty-five B, they have been identified in the plans, and the plans have not changed. There is a section through Outlot Ten there that will be hillside, you know, and that's been discussed previously, this is also free. So the construction plan and proposal are a majority of this has not changed, was absolutely changed is how you go on the line.
Any other discussion? Kevin?
Yeah, I, Bill actually brought up something, forty-five A and B will be part of owned by Horizon, which is what this is for, but Outlot Ten will actually be owned by Winger. And we're granting this to, to Horizon Development, not Winger. Do we need to also establish this for Winger? Bill?
No, the variance is granted, or during the, or for the, for the property here itself, variance is carried with the land.
Okay, no matter who the ownership is, right?
So the developer, while it's under the ownership of the developer, it will be cast in mind in that variance.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call vote please.
Trustee Popkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Lucio?
Yes.
Trustee Calabon?
No.
Trustee Rossis?
Yes.
Trustee Van Koo?
Yes.
Trustee Xander?
Yes.
President Lanko?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Letter E, variance request from section eighty-three point seven six to waive the requirement for lots forty-five A and forty-five B to have access to a public street.
Ten is not public.
Right. I'll have a second.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Open up for.
Who's got a second on that?
Uh, Bill did. Oh, I didn't get that one. Do you want to say anything on this?
Yeah, is there any other explanation? I mean, our going goal is for there to be public access, direct public access to any development for lots. Again, the situation Outlot Ten directly held for, in order to develop lot forty-five A and B. For seeing we have it on both of them.
All right, anybody for discussion? Roll call vote please.
Trustee Lucio?
Yes.
Trustee Popkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Xander?
Yes.
Trustee Van Koo?
Yes.
Trustee Rossis?
Yes.
Trustee Calabon?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, letter L, variance request from section eighty-three point eighty-three self ease to waive the requirement for lots forty-five A and forty-five B to have a front or butt in public street for a distance of at least fifty feet. Do I have a motion? Motion to approve the variance request? All right, do I have a second? Okay, I have a motion and a second. Open up for discussion.
Wow, explains on it. So this is why, it's like the previous one, the previous one required access to the public street this month, and the subdivision was required fifty feet to a, to front or boundary. So, a little bit more perspective language and a different section. They are asking for that there.
Any other, any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Trustee Xander?
Yes.
Trustee Van Koo?
Yes.
Trustee Rossis?
Yes.
Trustee Calabon?
Yes.
Trustee Lucio?
Yes.
Trustee Popkowski?
Yes.
President Lanko?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Letter G, variance from section eighty-three point nine eight to waive the requirement of pedestrian waves.
So, I'm gonna jump in here for, uh, this is, was one of the original varies requested and approved to this development under one single lot. If you remember, there was some discussion about having pedestrian on your sidewalk through this portion of Outlot Ten, which at the time. The subdivision called requires for sidewalk line section of the road. This one was granted, this variance was granted.
We already, we already waived the pedestrian court with this, for now that it's.
Correct. All right, do I have a second? I'll say, I have a motion and a second, discussion. All right, roll call vote please.
Trustee Calabon?
Yes.
Trustee Lucio?
Yes.
Trustee Popkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Xander?
Trustee Van Koo? Yes.
Trustee Rossis?
Yes.
President Lanko?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Letter H, approval of the proposed certified survey map for lots forty-five A, forty-five B, and Outlot Ten.
Can I just make a quick comment?
Sure.
So, as a previous motion, the board had asked that the final agreement for rolling in to repair options and personnel be brought back to the village, village board where consideration. If you do move to approve certified survey map, I'll request that. And just, I'm, I'm.
All right, do I have a motion? All right, I have a motion to approve the full certified survey map for map for lots forty-five A, forty-five B, now lot ten with the condition of the agreement, maintenance agreement, and future purchase on all lot ten. Okay, I have a motion and a second, discussion.
Uh, Bill, what did you say again there at the end? Is it something about a, when you were explaining this?
Yeah, so, since we, we don't have a final decision yet on hands agreement and office of purchase, which we have, and the final decision here, I would just request that approval of this certified survey map be conditioned that.
This will be the second time we're doing it on this agreement.
Right.
Two kicks at the can. All right, any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote please. Okay, roll call all please.
Trusty Vanquor?
Yes.
Trusty Vander?
Yes.
Trusty Tom Houshy?
Yes.
Trusty Lucius?
Yes.
Trusty Catelmo?
Yes.
Trusty Rossus?
Yes.
Uh well, yes.
All right.
Carries. Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Why?
Just approved. Oh. Things were talking were in Seagull Valley. Is there any objection just to bringing the consent agenda number three to this point?
Oh, I find that if I have a motion to move. Number ten, which would have been number three of the consent agenda up next.
Second.
All right, uh I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so let's do it. So we're at, we're talking about the. Something about the NGV. Utility element in all lot six of Seagull Valley, okay.
Yep, so I just wanted a little bit of clarification on what that looks like and what they're really planning and doing again. Because. Uh I couldn't really make a lot of head scales from the exhibits that were in the packet, so.
Let me give you a quick orientation here, and then I have Jerry uh on the line here. Or you go especially on this. So this is highway coming KT coming across here. This is uh Gilway, I believe, we're here. Right. And then this is that rocky well part that we were talking about. And so this is where the development. This is the edge of the development where it starts. And you can see it right out there right now, all of this. It has been, well, it's kind of down. Up here as we, you know, as we establish. And so NGV would like to cross. Cross. What is uh our lot. Six there. Which have been dedicated to the village.
What could that hillside?
Yeah, most of this, this is pretty, this is.
That's flat there.
Uh I started on the goal just uh requiring for conservation. Uh conservation. Jerry, anything you wanna add to this?
Uh the purpose of the Eastman is placed to run the electric service and install poles for the path lighting. To uh. We did the same thing between till the trail and Gil's Way. That subdivision years ago. Um this is the connector out to the. To the rest of the subdivision for the streetlights.
And we're assuming that's gonna be underground, right?
I couldn't understand you, Bill.
I'm sorry, we're assuming that's gonna be underground, not poles. Not.
The elect, the electric services themselves will be underground. There will be two. Streetlight poles there.
Yeah, great.
Trail light poles, whatever you want to call them.
Yeah, great, thank you, Jerry. Uh. Uh will this be under the bike path?
Oh, it's to the south of the bike path, south side of the bike path.
But closed?
Excuse me?
But it but right next to it will be closed?
Yeah, that dash line you see there.
Yeah.
That's essentially the south edge of the path. Give or take a few inches.
The, okay, the the high, the northernmost line, the yeah, bigger line. Uh and then only question, uh under four, it does say however. I M G N E should not be liable for damage to any plants or other shrubs removed. Um or destroying any trees or shrubs as they're doing that? I'm curious why they're willing to put it back into the original condition, but if they destroy a tree yourself, they won't put that back. Is that, is that common?
It's no different than uh our newer policies on uh. Any landscaping placed within the street right of way. Uh we'll restore it to grass, but. We don't replace fancy landscaping. It's a undue burden on the taxpayers, just. And in NG and E's case, it's an undue burden on the ratepayers.
Hey. Any other questions? All right, let's uh all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of all saying. The move. All right, we'll go to back to six, discussion and possible action regarding a sewer bill adjustment for four thousand three St. Francis Street. We have a motion.
Approve the uh sewer bill adjustment for that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. The move, number seven, discussion and possible action regarding the sewer bill adjustment for twenty-two, twenty-one Spring Street. Do I have a motion? Motion to approve the uh sewer adjustment for twenty-eight, twenty-one Spring Street? Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of all the same. The move. Number eight, discussion and possible action regarding village hall staff reorganization. Why don't uh, Bill, you wanna brief everybody?
Sure. Uh so as part of the budget process. Um at at previous meeting or last month. Um I had proposed. Uh changing or shifting the administrative system position from times to the full time. Um at that meeting, uh there's quite a lot for that people like. Uh other options to try to uh make this move be more hundred family. Look. Doing that this September day and talk about uh responsibilities of staff position. Uh in addition to that, responsibility of my position. Uh and all that we do there. And the back after this, I did handle a discussion with Julie and the members of the chamber. In regards to uh. The technical work that would be needed to help uh Chamber get through. Um this transition period. And uh from there, uh you know, I'm looking at uh source of revenue, uh to cover. Uh any additional home powers or or paying increases for that. Position. Uh and now unfolding uh some shifting of responsibilities between. Uh pay different positions, so it would be my position of the public clerk. Finance director's uh position. And uh management. And so I'll take the time to just gotta go through that uh proposal. Uh that question would be. Um first of all, we would hold that uh. Uh type responsibilities, expert responsibilities. Uh under my current position here, which over. Uh to uh the finance director and manager's position. Uh. Main reason, we've been discussing that at a long term uh. Plan uh with a finance director and manager. Big reason for that is because in other communities, these positions are are culturally kind of other. Um their responsibility, especially statutory responsibilities for. Uh regarding property tax, investment goals. Um billing, et cetera. Uh. Falling or most often similar training. Currently, the finance director myself, we coordinate. Every day in regards to uh what we do with at the office. Uh in addition to that, uh the responsibility of front office space area uh does allow uh. The media supervisory uh responsibility to develop finance. And uh that position currently also under a category of including. Um. Election records management. Uh licensing permit, although her official job. Description moves. And so the the way that uh organization works now is officially, my position has expert responsibility. I then allocate what I can uh and oversee his vice. Uh the office, the the office. And so um. With that being said, then I have the village administrator, I would then to a tie uh. A more active role in economic development, tourism, community development. Don't administration. I'm already in a uh a really uh unique situation in that if the developer comes to the village. They're coming to me, they ask about voting, they're coming to me, they ask about property, that's. Uh you know, what needs get done to get this possible. And I understand that that um. So those are all kind of other things and and I, you know, they have not been. Top priorities to depending on when they come in uh the statutory responsibilities. And so. Uh that being said, uh maybe we have a new administrative. Position uh with economic development and tourism, which all responsibility, not necessarily statutory to be required. Uh this position now re-asks and answers directly um in response to the board core. Finance director, treasurer, clerk position is all statutory responsibilities are all statutory. Under the various statutes. And then uh we would propose that administrative hours increase from twenty hours a week currently to thirty hours a week in support of. Uh currently, the administrative assistant does support. The front room uh. Utility building, building permits, applications uh position also covers licenses, fee. And working on elections now, so this position is first. For fresh meat. And so we would increase our presence there. And those all be able to uh cover as support. Responsibility of the commissioner and finance. But then we are also proposing that. There may some um financial incentives in this and that we would increase the. Uh finance director clerk position. To something three thousand a year. Uh and increasing the pay rates. From recurring to twenty-nine. And so that will put us kind of, you know, approximately in in that. Window of fifteen thousand dollars that the village budgets for. Uh. The Chamber of Powers uh does put us over by five thousand six hundred. And then all the positions will be split. Uh are split uh between general and. Water and sewer. We're holding that at one hundred. Or yeah, or using. So that is uh my proposal here in an attempt to resolve the concern of the board at last meeting. It is a proposal that is of each position. Um. In the hope of of building staff for current demand, future demand. Julie?
Um well, before the chamber ever give up their money, give up their money. We would need to know, is the village actually gonna step up and do like the social media and do everything for the for the chamber? I mean, they do more than just, because right now all you are gonna do are go just to the whole meetings and chat.
Hmm.
So, I mean, they can't afford to give up this money that we passed them.
Yeah. Yeah, so that, so um. In in regards to all of the the posting and all that Chamber does. I don't know if we'd be able to do that now if. In regards to distribute, you know, information and creating list areas and making sure that. Doesn't surprise me the team of nation that staff will get, but we would be able to do that. Uh yeah, you know, the thing that. Uh. The question at hand here is, you know, what is going to happen with the chamber and if that this is a. Short-term solution for this position, and we would ask that the board consider. Uh the resources, resources for the chamber at that time, having known what the economic development position does. The business.
And I, here's, here's what we're doing here that I think is important. How I see this playing out. We we definitely wanted to free up some of Bill's time, right? I I mean, that was a big goal. And what this does is it takes. These uh state standard requirements of the court moves it all along. That time period gives them flexibility. I think if we truly wanna talk about economic development, you have to have a paid staff that's responsible for it. So his work would be for economic development and tourism. But that can be worked in. There's not where it has to be done. You have to do this on November second, this on November third. Well, have that flexibility. The chambers is in transition right now. We don't know what it's at. And you know, there's, I think Doug gave three different options, direction they could go. I think once the chamber gets a proposal and what their plan is and what they need, then we can talk about. Supporting them with financial backing. Uh I think that's real feasible, but right now, I think this is a win-win for everybody. I think. Looking at the budget, if the chamber comes in with something mid-year, can we be able to do a budget amendment? To take care of it, but right now, I think the immediate need is, in my opinion, is to free up time for for Bill. And to get, if we're serious about economic development, get a position that's basically full-time and can work on grants. And and look at what's happening out there. Make contacts with people. I think sometimes we talk about, you know, tonight again, we talked about. Uh the shelter down at at Xander Park being the big economic development. We talk about parking, we need to do that. But I'll tell you, I think you have to go all the way back to getting a foundation. We gotta have someone working. Being an employee, full-time employee. Working on that or having contacts. At the same time, we have to really look and plan this starting, you know this. To look at trying to make us a little bit more business friendly. I don't think we're that, I think there's room for improvement in that. We have another citizen that's going to do a promotional uh shape on cross plane, so I think we're starting to. Build that foundation, and I just think this is. You know, one of the steps that need to have, and it's a double win, because not only can we meet that requirement. But it's also achieved what we were looking for and uh um. Bring up some time for him. And like I say, I'm not looking that this is gonna turn down. I think if you saw. My mom and you guys clearly want to be a supporting role with the chamber, but right now, it's unclear what the chamber is. And I think I'd rather see this money instead of staying in the bank. Go this way. When the chambers comes up with their proposal, they do a request to us and we do, if. We can help with that, we can always do a budget amendment to it. That that would be my uh feeling on it.
Michael? Uh so my question is, you're saying we're thinking of the statutory clerk. Items off a bill and Bobby's assuming them, so what exactly does that mean? I mean, are you going to be attending village board meetings anymore, or is she gonna be doing?
We both, we both.
Okay.
Yeah, so so I will continue to work on the agendas as they come in. Provide the the updates, provide the packet, uh. Help you through the packet, provide my recommendations. Uh none of that will change, the recording, the minute taking, the posting of that onto the website, the record keeping of the minutes, the minute book. All of that are statutory requirements. So actually, what that does is that it allows another person to be in the room to record and let me focus on helping you run the meeting.
Yeah, okay, can I just comment? Because something is statutory required. Doesn't mean you literally have to do it. For example, by statute, I'm the one that's supposed to notice all the meetings. I have yet to be the one. Build a staff. Now, if it doesn't happen, then I'm held accountable, but. As long as someone follows that requirement, but it doesn't always have to be literally that person.
Yeah, prime example, a prime example of that is is the various committees that we have. Obviously, I'm not in attendance for everyone, right? So uh whoever the staff liaison is for that, you know, they make sure that they're recording the mess. At the end of the day, it's it's me that.
But at the end of the day, it's it's me that is responsible for making sure that they post those minutes and the courts were stated. And so.
That's because you're the clerk, right?
That's because I'm the clerk.
So that responsibility would shift to Bobby then?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, Sheldon, Bill and Sarah.
Well, I give you credit for being crafty and thinking about huh how to move all this around. Um, so they, and Michael asked my first part of my question, which was about uh taking the statutory requirements of a clerk off you and and both you and Jay answered that and I, and that was helpful. But the second part is, um, then Bobby's got all the this this new work on her and is a bonus three thousand dollar rate. So what that's telling me is where's that time coming from? Like, you know, I'm sure she wouldn't sit around like, yeah, I've got a free eight hours this weekend, I'm just gonna go home. So where is that time coming from? And then lastly, um, the administrative assistant, which I had hoped to see go full-time, but regardless, what what are those ten hour, where are those new, those new ten hours, where are they going to be prioritized specifically? It's an additional communication meeting, but I just was curious to know what that really means.
Yeah, so so I think the win that we're trying to score here is the efficiency of time.
Okay.
So for example, um. We'll take assessment, tax assessment, right? Um, you know, statutorily goes to the clerk and then the clerk transmits it to the um the financial director and it gets billed and collected. All that will be all within one um, one position at this time. So whenever a department of revenue sends uh me anything in regards to taxes, they also need to be transmitted over to Bobby, she does the reporting, she actually does the reporting for the department of revenue, but I get final review and say on that. So it serves as a good check and balance, but also, you know, it takes time away from me to do that when her statutory responsibilities. So the same efficiencies on the economic development part, I already explained on that in regards to developers reaching out to me, uh, now I'll just take the more active role in doing that and having the the time and ability to do quite often the the same thing that I'm doing, but with more detail. Uh, in regards to the administrative assistant, um, and and her responsibilities, uh, we understand these upcoming years, next two years are going to be tremendously uh busy for her with just the current workload. And so we're trying to buy her additional work capacity because of the developments coming up, because of some of the things that we'll be talking about later in call session. Um, but really those additional hours are there uh to mainly support this on-brain of economic development um and freeing some of my time. Uh, one of the things that I like to kind of fall back to here is uh looking at the many different fees that we have in the permitting process that we have in our current ordinance structure. Uh, you know, in just the the year and a half that I've been here, um, if I was to pull a permit or I come in for a planned development amendment, you know, I'm unsure of the process to take and I'm unsure of what those fees are. And so, you know, those are all hurdles to a developer coming to the village. And so I think we can clean a lot of this up, especially if we have administrative support. Um, she's going to be involved more often to to help answer some of these phones, um, direct uh people when they come in. Um, and, you know, being in her position, she's going to naturally know um the processes that uh will be required for a lot of these permits. And, you know, she does update the website, so, you know, she'll be in a perfect position to make the website more friendly for someone who's developed items. But all of that, you know, again, if 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 I was to go on and on to try to justify the position being full-time, which there's a lot of work for her to do, it's a matter of finding, you know, that balance in the current situation. So we'll have to balance that.
Well, I just want to finish up and then say that um your your job, the title or the proposed title of economic development and tourism director um is really exciting, um, and so I'm excited to hear that part. And uh, and 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 you made this up at our request, at the board's request, and I hope it's not uh pinning you down. I don't think you'd do that to yourself, uh, putting, you know, ten tons of stuff in a five-ton stack. So I hope you're not doing that. It seems to me on first blood, it seems that you are, but but um I hope you're not and hope you haven't proposed that to us today.
No, yeah, like I said, I think I think this is, especially in regards to the clerk and the treasurer and the administrator and the economic development, it's about finding efficiencies within the current system that that we have. And for whatever reasons, those, it could be pro, it could be better managed.
Then I have Bill and then Sarah. Well, Kevin asked a lot of questions, um, which were great, because it looks to be exactly the same way that we're, you're not, you're not losing any work, you're just getting different work, but it's a matter of 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 efficiencies, I mean, that that makes sense also. So I'm assuming the administrative assistant at twenty hours was not eligible for insurance at thirty hours? Does that make her eligible for insurance or does that?
That, yeah, at, yeah, at thirty hours, uh, that position would not be eligible for health insurance. It will be eligible for retirement. And so that was part of the strategy and and some of the comments that were received at the previous meeting, understanding that that a health incident, the health insurance portion of it, um, in order for this to work and fit under budget numbers really had to not be an option.
Sure, I I I'd like, I mean, I understand the reasoning and the whatnot, but um you know, I'd like to see all of our staff that helps insurance that is, you know, and she's pretty close to full-time and pretty old, but uh, but I'm seeing, so I appreciate that. Sarah.
I just want to know, um, could you remind us what the proposed amount was before this? Like as far as increasing the administrative assistant to full-time, what was the budget effect on that?
Uh, it would have been a, I want to say thirty, thirty-six thousand dollar impact to the charity fund.
To go to from twenty to forty?
Correct. Now, I'm not saying that that is the final number, but that uh uh budgetary commitment to the position would have been that.
Right, okay, so um this cuts it down. And gives you take gives ten extra hours. Yeah, I just have the same sense that my Kevin expressed, which is it seems like, I mean, yeah, we're taking one thing away from Bill, but we're adding another thing, so that's a wash. And then, you know, Bobby's position is just getting more. And then, I don't know, I guess I have the same concerns like.
Well, I guess I would say, let's give it a try. I don't know why we wouldn't want to try it. And obviously we may have to modify it next year and we may have to go full-time, but I think this is a plan that covers a lot of bases that I think we should uh give it a try. Um, I understand he's giving it another test, but it's one that has a little bit more flexibility than what he had before. Um, I I like to, I think this is well overdue and I, and I'm with you, Bill, on that. I think we just see how it works. And if we have to revisit it, we revisit it. And if we have to up it, we up it and it's a a step thing. So I think there's a lot of positives for this, especially with the efficiencies that we're going to get out of this. And I think that's really important. And like I say, I I'm really trying to focus on, and it seems like a lot of people here, on economic development. And again, this is, I think, a big step in getting this done, because when you have groups do things, they just kind of fall between the cranks. So this is when you have someone that's on staff that can actually push some of this stuff uh more forward. So I I think it's a real plus. Okay, Sarah then Michael.
I just wanted to ask also, there's been some reference to the SRO and how that's been budgeted and I could you bring us all up to speed on it? Are we saying that the school board is not paying the village because the kids are not in school?
Well, that's their position, that since the school's not open, that's not it. Our position is a little different, but what has happened in between that is that the CARES Act um is going to cover the SRO. So we obviously can't double dip, so we're not going to challenge the school district to get into it. The federal government is going to compensate because it is related to the pandemic. I mean, school would be in session if we didn't have the pandemic. So we're getting reimbursed, so we think that that'll be a neutral thing.
Okay, that would.
Yeah, for for the for the timeframe that that's allowed for reimbursement on the CARES.
Right.
Which doesn't, doesn't necessarily cover the full amount in the contract.
All right, Michael. Uh, yeah, I just wanted, this sounds like it's great. And you were asking about where Bobby's going to find the time, but thank you coming up to thirty hours. Will she be taking some workload that Bobby does now off of her with the increased time that she's had?
Um, I can't answer that, um, so I'll let, I mean, I'll I'll let, I mean, if if that approved, you know, I would imagine that there would be some kind of relief there, depending on the delegation of responsibilities.
That's what I was, with her moving up to ten, Bobby might be finding some free time for the social shift. Right, I mean, this is part of this whole entire idea, right?
And they could balance, I mean, I mean, you know, with with a man, a minister of assistant, you know, being, you know, at thirty hours now, um, that position can take more active role in in posting to the website. So the whole videos, the whole minutes, I mean, that could come through a steady scheme um as a person who works in the website um instead of kind of me writing it together.
Right, exactly. Yeah, yeah, I'm supportive of this, you know, talking about today, I'm I'm suggesting we we make a six or eight months review at some point, just find out how it's going and see if we're getting any new information. Uh, I do wonder though, if we have a contract for for Bill as administrator and I think clerk under that contract. So do we have to revisit that contract for Bill and and for Bobby? Because she'd be the clerk.
So, yeah, Bobby doesn't have a employment, uh, employment player contract.
Okay, yeah. So the clerk, remember approving something that is for the clerk, but maybe.
Yeah, so I think right before the village hired me, there was a move to separate the clerk position, the clerk title from the position.
Yeah.
Right? So under the contract, I cover the clerk responsibilities under my contract. Um, so it would be as possible amendment to my contract.
Okay, with your title, I mean, the contract is a little bit. I don't know, one year.
So we're coming in.
Three years, right?
Yeah, my contract is worth three years.
Yeah. Okay. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't have to admit it for three years until three years is up, or do we have to admit with the new title? Or how's that work? Well, I guess we could do either way, but my whole, I guess my feeling is we're probably going to be in negotiations next year anyways for a new contract.
Do you, if you want to, if the board wants to open that up, we can definitely do that. Or like.
I don't know if I need to, I just, I thought we were maybe required to change file. You know, for administrative clerk, administrative clerk.
Yeah, I'll take a look at that and I can put it on there again.
Or maybe.
Or like what you said, as long as the clerk clerk stuff's covered, then we're fine statute by statute, right?
Do we have a motion, Abby?
Uh, I don't think we do.
We don't.
This is all discussion, do I have a motion?
I'll vote to pass the village hall staff reorganization as proposed.
Do I have a second? Okay, all right, is there any more discussion? Let's do a roll call, hold.
Trustee Francois?
Yes.
Trustee Xander?
Yes.
Trustee Pamakowski?
Yes.
Trustee Thucius?
Yes.
Trustee Kettlebauer?
No, I like the, I like what you have here, but I'm upset with the younger, we've offered the cheaper this money and they were very budgeted for, so that's I'm.
Trustee Brosius?
Yes.
President Langfell?
Yes, the chamber for this year still has the money. Right, right, right.
We still have seven thousand back payment coming this year, so they'll still get it?
Well, if there's a chamber, but right now there's not a chamber, is there?
Well, we are, we're still doing stuff.
Okay, well.
And we still have board, we still have fingerboard.
Okay, well, I I guess that's something we should probably put on the next agenda. Why don't we do that? Because I thought the fifteen was to pay the salary of the of the position. But anyways, we'll just get that clarified.
So that's a contribution for this year.
Yes, yeah, I mean. All right, number nine, discussion and possible action regarding resolution number thirteen dash twenty twenty budget amendment twenty twenty dash two. Can I have a motion, please?
Yes, I'll make a motion through resolution number thirteen twenty twenty for the amendments to the twenty twenty budget.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, open up for discussion.
Bobby's online, so you can uh provide a presentation on this. Bobby, go ahead.
Um, I'm just again making some adjustments um for the rail strike recovery stuff, different expenses we've had. Um, the community development stuff is uh developer costs that we get reimbursed for, so that's just a net effective zero on that one. Um, and then I did do the water utility revenue changes to reflect our new rates. We had budgeted in twenty twenty on the old rates. Um, so we, I wanted to get in, you know, at least six months of revenues to get good averages to adjust that. So you'll see that increase. Um, and then the SRO, I know Jay talked a little bit about that, how we were gonna get that money from the CARES Act rather than the school, so we're adjusting that as well.
All right, any questions for Bobby? Any general discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. All all say, thank you, Bobby.
Hey, no problem.
All right, we are to uh future agenda items. I have chamber uh funding on there, is there any others? You know, if you don't, if you have something that comes up, shoot an email to myself or Phil or both. All right.
Oh, uh, do we want to talk about, uh, I don't know if this is the right spot, but uh, adjusting our meeting for November because that was some range during Thanksgiving.
It's the Monday before Thanksgiving.
Well, that's fine. I I don't, well, actually, for for future, let's talk about the December meeting, because that comes right through Christmas.
I I don't, that one I don't know. What's the date of the December fourth?
Twenty eighth.
Oh, the twenty eighth?
Yeah, usually we move that to the second Monday in November, so I'm just throwing on the agenda for next month.
Move on to recess like they do in Congress?
Okay, I will put that, why don't we put that in November? We're going to keep that the regular meeting. And then we'll put December meeting dates on the agenda. All right. All right, do I have a motion to go into call session? Do I have a second? Roll call, hold, please.
Trustee Brosius?
Yes.
Trustee Kettlebauer?
Yes.
Trustee Thucius?
Yes.
Trustee Pamakowski?
Yes.
Trustee Xander?
Yes.
Trustee Francois?
Yes.
President Langfell?
Yes.
Okay, we are in call session.
What question? Do a adjourn, both do adjourn. Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, good evening, everybody.